This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
City Attorney, Doctor?
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Reed will be about 10 minutes late, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Put your eyes for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, mission of God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Boarding in progress.
The minutes for 11:821, 1:2422, 2:1022, 2:2822, 10:2622 were received. Do we have any comments? Nothing from the body. Minutes will stand as submitted. We will jump over proclamation today and we'll move straight on to board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Golf Advisory Board, reappointment of Art Pembroke to a fourth term on the Golf Advisory Board as a citizen member. Third term ended October 30th, 2021. Fourth term will expire October 30th, 2024. I'm also recommending zoning commission, reappointment of Rebecca Harbage to a third term on the zoning commission as a citizen member. Second term ended September 30th, 2022. The third term will expire September 30th, 2025. I'm also recommending Business Improvement District, appointment of Seth Brandenberger to a first term on the Building Improvement District as a board member. Interim term ended October 31st, 2022. First term will expire October 31st, 2025. And I guess I'm Board of Health Joint Governing Body, appointment of Commissioner Andy Shertliff and Mayor Collins as City of Helena representatives. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I will go ahead and move the reappointment of Art Pembroke to a fourth term on the Golf Advisory Board as a citizen member. Third term ended October 30th, 2021. Fourth term will expire on October 30th, 2024. Reappointment of Rebecca Harbage to a third term on the zoning commission as a citizen member. Second term ended September 30th, 2022. Third term will expire September 30th, 2025. The appointment of Seth Brandenberger to a first term on the Building Improvement District as a board member. Interim term ended October 31st, 2022. First term will expire October 31st, 2025. And the appointment of Commissioner Shertliff and Mayor Collins as City of Helena representatives to the Board of Health Joint Governing Body.
It's been moved and seconded. Ending discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. I apologize.
That's okay. Consent agenda. We have one motion for these claims. Then B, acceptance of sub- award FHE 21-003 in amount of $45,980 from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. C, consider approving resolution declaring various vehicles owned by the City of Helena to be surplus property and authorize the city manager to dispose of that property. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just really quickly, I have a question on the third item, the surplus property, for the aerial fire truck. I guess, what is a reserve auction and then what is, what happens to those funds once they come through?
Mayor and Commissioner, we discussed with the Helena Fire and we're looking at setting that reserve at about $100,000, somewhere in there.
And then does that just go into the fire department? Okay, great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Bid award. Move to award the Law and Justice Center Second Floor Renovation Project CF 23-01 to Abraham Construction, Abraham Two Construction Services Incorporated in amount of $881,300. Facility Superintendent Sampson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I am Troy Sampson, City Community Facilities Department Superintendent. Tonight, I'm bringing before you a bid award for a remodel at the Law and Justice Center located at 406 Fuller Avenue. As you know, the Law and Justice Center is jointly owned by the city and the county. The City Community Facilities Department manages the maintenance, capital improvements, and all renovations of the facility. Lewis Clark County has requested improvements to the second floor in the pillar section of the Law and Justice Center that has not been renovated and is currently vacant. This renovation addresses building code, fire code, and ADA compliance, and will allow the county offices to occupy the space. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements need to be made to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Construction renovations also need to be made to suit the operational needs of the county departments. This project will upgrade mechanical air systems for the pillar building, which is needed to obtain the occupancy for the second and third floors of the building. New flooring, ceiling tiles, and stairwell treads will be installed on all of second floor. Walls will be constructed in the eastern section to create additional office space. The City of Helena and Lewis Clark County have reviewed the scope of the project and are committed to paying for the improvements. Bids for the Law and Justice Center Second Floor Remodel and Mechanical Upgrades Project were opened and read aloud at 2:00 PM local time on October 4th, 2022, in room 309 of a city-county building. Abraham Construction Services Incorporated was the only contractor to submit a bid for the project. The award is based on the lowest responsive cumulative base bid plus any added alternate schedules the city determines to include with the project, which there were none. City staff believe the base bid submitted by Abraham Construction Services Incorporated is fair and reasonable. If the city decides to proceed with the award of this project, staff recommends awarding Abraham Construction Services Incorporated for the base bid price of $881,300. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Sampson. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can you, this came up when we were discussing budgeting out some of this during the, a few city-county meetings ago, but can you remind me what space will be left and then, I guess, what does the makeup of the building look like after these are completed and occupied?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, after we occupy the second floor, then the only vacant space available will be the third floor, the upper floor of the pillar section, the south portion of the facility. All other space in that building will be occupied.
Are we close, I mean, is it close to 50/50, or?
It's about 56 to 44 is the split. And that's currently.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Superintendent Sampson, how does the bidding process work other than the public announcement? Can you walk us through that briefly?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Shertliff, we're going to advertise per state law, and the information, the bid package goes out to kind of a marketplace, I guess, for contractors. So it's an exchange, and they go out and they see these projects come up. If they desire to bid on it, then they're going to come to our, they're going to submit their bids per our bid request. At that point, we will open their bids, review them, and then sit down with staff and administration and make sure that we have budget to move forward with such project based on their cost that they've put together.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no online public comment.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to award the Law and Justice Center Second Floor Renovation Project number CF 23-01 to Abraham Two Construction Services, Inc., in the amount of $881,300.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Mr. Mayor, really briefly, if we can, I just want to correct the record on the board appointments. I believe both of us said Building Improvement District, and we obviously meant Business Improvement District, so I just want to make sure the record.
You sure it was both of us or you?
I got a text message. It's okay, we'll correct the minutes because our packets need to go.
Thank you. All right. Transportation Systems, Benton Turn Lanes and Transfer Station Entrants, Bid Awards, Director Knopki and Public Works Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second time that we've bid this project. The second time did come with some dramatic, significant changes to the project plans on the transfer station entrance itself to try to keep the budget amount that we had, and hopefully the bids would come in close to the budget. Unfortunately, this time around, we also received bids that were in excess of our budget authorization for these two portions of the project. Again, this project, for those who are not familiar with it, are going to put turn lanes north of the tracks, turning into the Sun Haven subdivision, and then curb and gutter both sides on Benton from the railroad tracks to Custer. The other portion of the project was to widen the transfer station entrance to allow for easier access to the entrance along with new gates, so the solidway staff doesn't have to go down and manually open the gates and close the gates behind the last few folks in the transfer station, so these would all be electronic. The gates are in, but the rest of the infrastructure is not, and again, this bid came in over what we have budget authority for, and we, Director Leland is here to answer any questions you have on his portion, but I think we are going to go and sit down and see how we can absorb some of the inflation and escalated costs that we're seeing and go back and rebid this probably after the first of the year in hopes that we can make this project work because it is a needed project for both the transfer station and Benton Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public, I apologize. I'm just popped up.
All right.
I do have one hand raised online, Greg Worth.
Who?
Greg Worth.
Oh. Go ahead, Mr. Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Greg Worth, W I R T H. I reside at 501 State Street. I am a member of the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council. The Advisory Council previously approved a motion to recommend the city not award this project. Upon our review of the project, we felt the pedestrian facilities were lacking in the project, and the turn lanes widen Benton Avenue, which create a longer crossing distance for the pedestrians. So our recommendation was to not award the project, so we would concur with denying the project on budgetary considerations also. And in light of the sidewalk summit last week, we'd also request that for the benefit of the community and in accordance with the growth policy, the money, funds for this project would be better spent on sidewalk facilities within the City of Helena rather than widening Benton Avenue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have no other public.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to deny award of the Benton Turn Lanes and Transfer Station Entrance Project, City Project Number 17-34.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
All right. Communications proposals from Commissioners. Commissioner?
So, I would like to offer comment about the, from the City Manager Relations Subcommittee to the Commission for your consideration. In the packet this evening, we have an agreement that we're hoping we can get consensus to execute with CMS relative to the City Manager Recruitment Process. And just to give you a brief idea, hopefully you've had the opportunity to read through it, but I'll just briefly outline the scope, which I think is probably me to the agreement. CMS will assist the City Commission in developing a detailed announcement which outlines position requirements. It will develop a recruitment plan to generate a sufficient pool of qualified candidates. It will conduct active recruitment of the position, including development of marketing materials for the position and identifying qualified candidates for the assessment. It will work with the Commission to screen and narrow applicants for purpose of interviews, develop and facilitate a multi-step interview process, and assist with the selection of the City Manager. And in addition to that, they will provide consulting services to develop a written employment agreement and develop a performance appraisal form and process for the Commission to use in addition to other services that they will provide. So we're just kind of hoping for consensus here to move forward with this agreement. It has been reviewed by legal and our human resources folks, and so we're just hoping for, to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think this makes sense. I was really pleased with the, with the recommendations and really summaries that were included in, I guess, the after-action report that we had requested and discussed a couple of meetings ago. I think that it makes a lot of sense to move forward, given that they have such deep understanding now, after authoring that report and working very closely with staff in the city over the last couple of years as well, and it's consistent with our procurement process, given that it's such a low bid. So I'm, I've been really pleased with their work up till now. I think it'll be great to have a local firm who really knows the community be part of this, and also, I do want to draw attention to some of the pieces in here of just what's included in the scope of services. I think that we're coming at this from maybe a more strategic direction, as recommended in the report too, so looking forward to this, and I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just briefly say that I agree. Looking through the agreement, it looks good. I've been very pleased with the work of CMS to date, and I'm looking forward to this next phase in the recruitment process, so I would also support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we've got to go ahead. Yeah, okay. Any other comments from the commission on proposals from Commissioner, communications and proposals?
So just to be clear, we're, all five are comfortable with moving forward?
Yeah, I am.
I am too.
Any other communications from Commission? Okay, report of the City Attorney, Dr. Dr.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I have nothing to report tonight, except that I like my new name, so thank you.
All right. Report of the City Manager, Interim City Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'd like to first invite Director McMahon up. I know that there was some comment about the process, the RFP process that we undertook as an organization to hire a consultant to work with this on the market-based pay plan, so I asked Director McMahon if she would explain the process that the city undertook in that regard.
You have the floor, Director McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, Mayor and Commissioners. I am Renee McMahon, the Human Resources Director for the City of Helena. At the October 26th, 2022 Commission Administrative Meeting, a citizen shared some inaccurate information about the city's RFP process for our pay plan project. I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify for you, the commission, and for the public, accurate information regarding the city's RFP process with regard to this plan. Unlike the bidding process that we heard about a little bit earlier with our streets and some building and renovation, Montana Code states that service agreements such as this are exempt from the bidding process. However, to be transparent and welcoming to all prospective organizations, the City of Helena conducted a public process whereby all interested parties could submit a proposal. On August 18th, 2022, the City of Helena opened a request for proposals for the city's pay plan project by placing the RFP and all pertinent documents on the city's website. I, the city's HR Director, solicited recommendations for qualified consultants from the Montana Class 1 City's HR Directors, and then sent notices to those recommended organizations. I also referenced the Society of Human Resources Management, SHRM, an organization. I referenced their vendor list and sent notices to vendors who listed pay plan and compensation as their areas of expertise. So just for your information, SHRM is the world's largest HR professional society. It represents 300,000 members in more than 165 countries. The organization that the citizen represents is not listed in SHRM's vendor list under any area of expertise. I also posted a public notice in the Helena IR on August 28th and September 7th, 2022. Six proposals were received on or before the due date of 5:00 PM September 16th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Comments or questions from the commission? Thank you. May I continue? Manager Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, next, I'd like to invite Director Knopki up to talk about the city's snow removal plan and efforts.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. We easily do this at an admin meeting, but in light of the current conditions of the management, I thought tonight would probably be an opportunistic time. So just a reminder, our crews do work from 4:00 in the morning to approximately midnight. There's three shifts intermingled in there. A number of staff in each shift to try to best provide for the needs of the citizens. Our last shift, which is the midnight shift, we have two staff members on, and they basically can keep the streets up in the late evening hours, and then if it starts snowing, then again, they can call in or stay later to do that. So our shifts are set up so that in the event that we have a significant snowfall, we can add four hours to each shift, and that would give us 24-hour coverage until our expectation in the city's snow plan is met, which is to plow all streets at least once before they go off of the 12-hour shifts. When we first implemented that, the 12-hour shifts worked well, but we did see some significant impacts on our drivers, basically health-wise, getting burned out on those, some storms back in 18 and 19 that had significant time. So we have tried to keep those shifts back, cut those shifts back to the normal shifts or to 10-hour shifts so that the fatigue doesn't set in as quickly, but we are still committed to our mission of trying to get those streets plowed as quickly as possible. We still have our emergency snow routes as our number-one priority, and then our priority one-twos and threes, and then our local streets after that. Our towing policy that goes along with our snow plowing, you know, did begin on November 1st and continues till April 15th, and that is the mark in tow vehicles, or trailers, boats, stored items on the rideaway on any street, not just snow routes. There is a misconception that it's only snow routes, but it is all streets to get those moved off for the safety of not only the drivers but the traveling public. So another couple, couple other questions that come up is why don't we sand from basically intersection to intersection? That is to save the city on material costs, so we do basically sand at the intersections. There are areas, usually the hills, that we do sand intermittently throughout the, between the intersections. And on curbs, if there's a area of the city that has curbside sidewalk, those streets will be plowed three to four feet away from the curb. That is to try to keep the snow off from burping up onto the sidewalks, so that berm will be out into the roadway, into those parking areas. If there's a boulevard in those areas, then that area gets plowed curb to curb, and that snow goes up into the boulevards. There is kind of a, we do have some narrow boulevards where that can be tricky, but the drivers are well, you know, well-versed at where they're at and their routes, and they usually make accommodations. They might have to pull away from the curb to make sure that snow doesn't fall onto the sidewalks. But that's about all I have. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you have on the snow plowing in Helena, or I can bring you up to speed with the actual snow and ice control plan if you would like that presentation.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Commissioner Reed's hand is up. Commissioner Reed, go ahead.
Just very briefly, as a person who lives at the top of a very large hill, I just want to say thank you to all the drivers who are out. It was a festive ride to work this morning, and I saw a number of people struggling, but I also saw a lot of plows out, I saw a lot of dirt in the intersection, so thank you to you and everyone on the crew who handled the snow dump last night. We appreciate you.
Are there any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Director Knopki, for the presentation. What's the best way for, if the public has a concern with something snow removal-related, what's the best way to, for them to get ahold of you?
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, the best way is the MyHelena app. There are top items in there under the transportation section for snow berms, snow plow, sand request. That's the easiest way. If they do not have the app or don't have the means... the means to, they're more than welcome to call our office, and then we put in that into a work order so that our, um, plow drivers, um, supervisors and tablets are all updated with that new work order.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments? I do have one question. Is, do we have the GIS map up again this year?
Uh, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, yes, I got, I did get, receive a, uh, confirmation from the GIS Department that it is up and it looks like it's tracking. Um, we can put, I can get that, uh, link out to the PIO and, um, have them make that readily available to folks.
That'd be excellent. For the public listening, we have a really excellent GIS map that shows you, um, when, when your street has been plowed or the hours in which you can expect it to come back. So, um, thanks to all the drivers because last week they were busy sweeping the streets and now plowing. So, appreciate it. Okay, um, City Manager.
Uh, Mayor Protem, that concludes my report.
Excellent. We'll go ahead and move on to, um, communication from Helena Citizens Council. Do we have a representative?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, uh, thanks for having me tonight. Lowell Chandler from, uh, District Three. Um, as you may have heard, uh, HCC, uh, the most pressing thing that we have before the Commission is a motion to support funding of a, the construction of a bridge along the Centennial Trail over Henderson Avenue. Uh, and we're, we're also requesting that that bridge be named, uh, in honor of the late Commissioner Eric Fever. Uh, as a, I, I'm also a member of the Non-Motorized Transit Advisory Council, which Commissioner Fever was also on while I was, uh, while he was still with us, and one of his biggest push, pushes was to try and get a bridge built over Henderson. And he's not alone in that. It's been, I think everyone is, is aware of the need for that project. It's been, uh, on the Commission's agenda and before the Commission for probably over a decade. Commissioner Elsaser, uh, was trying to get, trying to push that. I think the, the oldest documents I found from him were from twenty-fourteen. Uh, Commissioner Halliday was a proponent of it, and, uh, also Commissioner Fever. Um, NIMTEC also passed a motion, um, on October eleventh, I think I have that date right, uh, and that was also forwarded to the Commission regarding the need for this bridge. Um, really, it just boils down to it's, it's a very dangerous crossing there. Uh, anyone who's been on it, it's, it's dirt road, that it's kind of steep ravine on both sides, and for vehicles driving, traveling south on Henderson, uh, there's that, the railroad trussel there, and they kind of dip down, and it's impossible to see, you know, a little kid trying to cross on, on a bike or, or walking across, or adults as well. Um, I've had some, uh, some close encounters there too, as a frequent user of it. Um, and this is, this, it's Helena's only major, uh, non-motorized separated pathway. So, it's, it's, it's a project that really needs to get done. Um, whether, uh, internal allocation of ARPA funds would be appropriate, um, to fund the whole project, that would be great. Or, um, as you guys are aware, you know, match, matching funds go a long way to getting projects done. So, even just a small portion of the funds available through ARPA for an internal allocation could go a long way towards the city actually getting this project off the ground. It's been a decade plus of the, the need for it. So, there's tons of pedestrian and bike-related grants available on the federal and state level, and if we have, you know, a starting point, a foundation, uh, say five hundred thousand or something along there, I think it would go a long way to actually getting this project done. Um, and also with the Inflation Reduction Act, I think there's a lot of, uh, potential grants that the city could look into. Um, and I would also note that, uh, January fifth, the Commission had a, a, uh, agenda item about ARPA funds, January fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and there was over, I think it was, by my count, it was around twenty public commenters, uh, wrote into the Commission urging the construction of the, of a bridge over Henderson. So, this is a pressing need for the community. It's, it would be a wonderful project to have, and, uh, the HCC passed the motion at a special meeting, uh, this last Friday on, uh, and it was a fourteen, fourteen to one. So, we, we respectfully request that the Commission give the attention that this project needs, and, uh, hopefully we can get it done, um, within, you know, maybe a five-year time span. Maybe I'm being too hopeful, but, um, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Uh, aside from that, that main motion where the HCC's been working on revising its bylaws and, um, and its guidance documents, but, yeah.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Um, uh, Mr. Chandler, thank you very much for being here today and for, um, bringing this up. I know it's something that we've, well before my time, I've had the chance to s- sit down with you all at HCC and also to NIMTEC, and, uh, do we know, is there any estimate for this bridge?
Yeah, so there, there's no estimate. Um, as you guys know, NIMTEC is a citizen-led lay advisory board, so there, there was no es- estimate conducted by them, uh, by that board, and then HCC is the same. There's no estimate. But, I've done a little bit of digging, just 'cause I, I was interested myself. Um, the Federal Highway Administration had a, uh, a article or some information release on related, uh, pedestrian bridges that were over highways, like four, four-lane highways, and those projects ranged, uh, from about one point two-five to, I think about five-point-five million. Um, the Missoula, the Missoula Pedestrian Bridge along there, the Bitterroot Trail, um, on the South Reserve area, if you've been down there. Um, that bridge was constructed in, I think, twenty-seventeen. Yeah, it has all sort of fancy gizmos that, of, only Missoula would have, uh, like heat, like snow sensing, uh, sensors that turn on heaters so this bridge is melted au- automatically, which is pretty cool. I would, I would love that, but maybe we don't need it here. Um, but that project was about four-point-two million, I think, so, um, but yeah, this is, that's, that's a project crossing over Reserve Street, which is, you know, a five-lane, uh, Highway ninety-three, so, just for comparison, yeah.
Other questions? I, uh, Commissioner Reed, yes, please.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Um, just to, um, add to that information, I believe it was the last admin meeting, um, I had requested information on the funds that had been set aside for Centennial Trail, and I believe Commissioner Dean, currently Mayor Protem Dean, had also, um, requested information on Henderson. So, I'm hopeful that we will receive some information about possible costs for that pedestrian bridge, uh, coming up, um, at an admin or other meeting in the near future. So, stay tuned.
Great.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Reed. One clarification I had, I appreciated the recommendation you all sent. Um, I, it wasn't necessarily clear to me, we all recommending that we, you know, regardless of the cost, we do it, or, or we continue to pursue figuring out what funds we have available, given, given, I mean, 'cause it, we do know the likelihood of it being over a million is probably, um, likely, and I'm gonna look at Director Knopki. He's shaking his head. Yes. Um, and that's, you know, a sizable amount of, of the ARPA funds that, that we have available.
Yeah, uh, Acting Mayor, Commissioners, I, so in, in response to that, I think that's why it, I didn't actually put it in the motion itself. I probably should've. Um, but I think the emphasis on matching funds, using the ARPA money as a foundation, maybe not, maybe it won't get us all the way, you know, 'cause it is, it's a si- it would be a sizable chunk. The city has major infrastructure needs that it needs to prioritize. I, I agree with that. Um, but if we could allocate just a, a portion, two-hundred-and-fifty even, or some, something, um, to get this project off the ground. Uh, I know the ALSA Trails with BikeWalk Helena, they have a pot of money that's been sitting with them for, I don't know, five-plus years or so. It's about sixty thousand. So, there's, there's investment from, the community wants this. Um, and I, I also think, you know, the trail, along with the Ten Mile Creek Park and the access to Fort Harrison, there could be some cooperation with the city and the National Guard, the, with DOD. Um, it ju- it just seems like such an appealing project that we, we could get it done with, if we just have a little bit of base money to get started, to get it scoped, and to actually have, when we're presenting to other grants, say, "This is our idea." Right now, we, we don't really have a, what it, what it would look like, you know, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to, um, regular items. Uh, first, regular item A, consider an ordinance establishing burning regulations within the City of Helena. Chief Campbell.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Uh, as we've, uh, discussed in previous admin meetings, in your packet tonight, we have the final draft of an ordinance that would establish burning restrictions for the City of Helena. Uh, again, the, uh, ordinance has some functional elements to it, uh, primarily to define the operational parameter for permit holders conducting open burning for the purpose of fuel reduction, uh, details the size of fire and distances from structures for recreational burning in alignment with International Fire Code, uh, prohibits the burning of rubbish or garbage, requires onsite extinguishment capabilities, and aligns the City of Helena with level of fire restrictions as adopted by county or other authorized entity without having to make seasonal requests of the City Commission as restriction levels fluctuate. Uh, it's also worth noting two things this ordinance does not do. It does not eliminate or prohibit property owner backyard-type recreational fire pits, and it would not provide governance or control over smoke impacts, wind direction, or nuisance complaints relative to byproducts of combustion. I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, public, excuse me, thank you. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Now I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem.
Oh, you got it.
Commissioner Logan.
I'd move to approve an ordinance establishing burning regulations within the City of Helena.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero, and, uh, Mayor Protem, if I may, just to, for the record, Mayor Collins has had to step away, uh, and may be able to return for the end of the meeting, and I will let you know.
We will keep an eye out for him. Okay, regular item B, consider a resolution allocating general fund savings created from accepting U.S. Treasury state and local recovery grants, funds, and declaring all grants funds as revenue loss for, used for general government services. Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commission. Good evening. So, this resolution, uh, uh, solidifies, uh, three things. One, it, um, declares that we accepted the ARPA funds in the amount of eight-point-four-eight-six-million-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and we declared it as revenue loss for government services. Um, by doing so, we ended up, uh, creating general fund savings in that amount. So, um, once we declared it as revenue loss, um, we were then allowed the flexibility to distribute the funds, um, more, uh, toward what the, what the Commission desired and not as restrictive as what it was originally intended to in the interim rule. Um, this resolution also, um, allocates what the Commission has with
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan, and then we'll go to Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Danielson, for, um, for this report and for those in the public that, uh, maybe wonder how we came to these, um, conclusions in, in this item and, and really in the next, I believe, um, was the result of a great deal of work of staff in prioritizing needs that exist within, in the City of Helena's operation and, and, uh, numerous presentations to the Commission, um, to get to this point, and, and so, uh, really appreciative of not only the staff's work, but the Commission's discussion over, um, quite a few meetings. So, thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I, I would echo the comments of Commissioner Logan, and just to clarify, um, one point on the matter of the ERP, um, I had asked a question fairly recently about the order of, I guess, events, for lack of a better term, with the ERP and, and what order we're going to go, and I asked that question specifically with regard to permitting, uh, because we had seen a separate request on, um, a fix for permitting, because permitting was going to be towards the end of the process. So, my question is, if we, uh, approve this today, do we still have some flexibility with the rollout of the ERP and some opportunities to talk a bit about that, um, just to, to see if there's some room there, uh, because I have heard a number of people suggested the permitting issue is one that may be more timely. So, is there still room to discuss the process if we approve this today? Thank you.
City, I think City Manager.
Mayor Protem. Uh, Commissioner Reed, yes, we will bring that information forward at our next administrative meeting. Uh, also included in that discussion was additional information. It wouldn't be exact because, uh, obviously it's not designed, but cost for the bridge. Uh, and I believe we had one other item that the Commission requested additional information on, and, and yeah, that was the, uh, Grand Street Theater, uh, roof replacement. And so, if the Commission at that meeting tells us to proceed, uh, with any one of those projects, then we'll come back to you with another resolution at a City Commission meeting if you choose to allocate for any one of those projects.
Thank you, and just, that was sort of my, my second question, just to summarize, to make sure, uh, members of the public understand that this is not the end of internal project discussion. This was, there were some time-sensitive projects, and so this is step one, but there may be additional steps. So, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
I did have one question. Director Danielson, um, can you maybe just briefly, we haven't talked about for a while, but the Civic Center allocation, we're actually matching grant funds. Is that accurate?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem and Commission. Yes, so, um, on, in particular, the, um, HVAC system over at the Civic Center, um, the city, or the Civic Center, um, staff applied for and the city received, um, a shuttered venue grant, um, in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. Um, we then allocated, um, funds- at our next administrative meeting. Uh, also included in that discussion was additional information. It wouldn't be exact because uh, obviously it's not designed, but cost for the bridge. Uh, and I believe we had one other item that the commission requested additional information on. And, and yeah, that was the Grand Street Theater uh, roof replacement. And so, if the commission at that meeting tells us to proceed uh, with any one of those projects, then we'll come back to you with another resolution at a city commission meeting if you choose to allocate for any one of those projects.
Thank you. And just, that was sort of my, my second question, just to summarize, to make sure members of the public understand that this is not the end of internal project discussion. This was, there were some time sensitive projects, so this is step one. But there may be additional steps. So thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
I did have one question, Director Danielson. Um, can you maybe just briefly, we haven't talked about for a while, but the Civic Center allocation, we're actually matching grant funds. Is that accurate?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protam and Commission. Yes, so um, on, in particular, the um, HVAC system over at the Civic Center. Um, the city or the Civic Center um, staff applied for and the city received um, a shuttered venue grant um, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, we then allocated um, funds from our general capital cash reserves for that particular project. And then this, um, I think that that was another three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand. And then this is the, the last of the funds needed in order to move forward with going out to um, bid for that particular project.
And we'll be able to use the facility year round now?
Yes, so once we, once we uh, secure the, the funding, um, which this resolution will do, then they can go out for bid and um, begin, begin working on the, on the project. And so, um, and then also spend the, the venue grant um, in a timely manner as well because there are restrictions on um, how, how much time we have left to spend on that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Is there any public comment?
Mayor Protam, Commissioners, I have no online public comment.
Okay. Seeing no public comment in the chambers or online, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protam, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve a resolution allocating general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury state and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss used for general government services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we will move on to public hearings. Item A, consider a resolution granting tax benefits to Prickly Pear Development LLC by valuing their land at fifty percent of the taxable value as allowed by statute for construction of a building at seven sixty Florence Street. And, oh, I, okay, sorry, thank you. I'm jumping ahead, sorry. Ellie, I'm just making sure you're paying attention. We'll actually go back to regular items. Uh, C, thank you. Consider a resolution of intention amending the revised final budgets, budget authorities, and appropriations for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two and ending July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for the city of Helena, Montana by amending resolution number two zero seven seven one to increase appropriations by thirteen million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and to set a public hearing. Director Danielson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protam and Commission. So, um, this resolution of intention um, is uh, intended to amend the final budgets. It goes to hand with the um, allocating of uh, general fund cash reserves. Um, so what it does is it allows the, um, now that the general fund that didn't have the set appropriations to distribute the um, agreed upon allocations for the general fund savings. So it does allow for those distributions to happen, the appropriations to happen. The reason it's a little bit more is because of the actual eight point four million. Is if you um, look to, um, it also increases, you know, it's kind of an accounting procedure where you're, you're taking money from the general fund and you're giving it to the water fund, and now the water fund needs its appropriations increased so that it can spend the one point eight million. So it, it, it does that along with the capital fund to um, purchase um, almost a million dollars for the ERP and the HVAC system, the emergency management fund to purchase its, its uh, CAD system and records management system, et cetera. Excuse me, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any um, comments or questions from the commission? Just one um, clarification.
Excuse me.
Oh, you're fine. Um, well, once, we'll hold the reserve. Um, but that, that will not be included in this kind of a motion until we actually decide how we spend that. Is that accurate? That's why it's not included in this list, and it was in the previous one.
Mayor Protam and Commission, that's correct.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions?
Maybe one last question. So, relative to the motion, do we need a, a date for the public hearing that we're gonna set?
So the public hearing is going to be on November twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Mayor Protam, I have no public comment online.
Okay, seeing no public comment in chambers or online, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protam.
Commissioner Logan.
I would move to approve a resolution of intention amending the revised final budgets, budget authorities, and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for the city of Helena, Montana by amending resolution number two zero seven seven one to increase appropriations by thirteen million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and set a public hearing for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
We'll just wait a second as the mayor comes back and we're just about to start public hearing item A, which I will announce now and then let him take back over. I, public hearing, A, item A, consider a resolution granting tax benefits to Prickly Pear Development LLC by valuing their land at fifty percent of the taxable value as allowed by statute for construction of a building at seven sixty Florence Street in the city of Helena, Montana. And Ms. Ray is coming to us now.
My apologies, Mayor and Commission, I was talking to the applicant for these tax abatements. Um, thank you for letting me present tonight. So, uh, there are two tax abatements before you this evening. They're interrelated as been, has been presented at a joint work session with the county board of commissioners. So I'm just going to present them both simultaneously. Um, but for the record, for the public's benefit and yours, um, the purpose of a tax abatement is really to allow local jurisdictions to encourage new and or expanding businesses in the community um, so they can expand their operations or start new, as in the present case. Um, and it will then afford those businesses that are granted the tax abatements the opportunity to really afford improvements that they wish to make. Um, the applications that you have before you tonight are for Prickly Pear Development LLC and Five Star Leasing LLC. Um, they approached the city in late spring, April, early May, um, in the first instance about potentially applying for tax abatements. They submitted their full applications under the state's um, New and Expanding Industries Tax Abatement Program um, on August thirtieth, and hence we are before you tonight. What they are doing is Prickly Pear Development LLC is constructing a four million dollar building at seven sixty Florence Street. Five Star Leasing LLC is going to be installing two point seven million dollars worth of equipment so that Badlander Spirits LLC, if you're following, can uh, start operations with a ready-to-drink beverage facility. And if you're unfamiliar with what that is, essentially, what that is is a factory where they will be able to can um, anything from water, local Montana water, to um, things like White Claws. Um, so they will blend and can um, beverages. Um, ultimately, their ambition is to actually create, and this is not a quote from me, but from the applicant themselves, the best whiskey distillery in the state of Montana. That will be further down the road. Um, with this tax abatement program from the state, um, you have to meet three discrete criteria in order to be eligible for a tax abatement. The first of which is that you're going to add um, at least fifty thousand dollars or more in uh, market value to the land in question. So this property prior to construction of the four million dollar building um, was valued at approximately four hundred sixteen thousand dollars. So they are adding well in excess of that with the four million dollar building and two point seven million dollars worth of equipment that will be going into the facility. Uh, the other criteria, the second criteria, rather, is that um, at least fifty percent of the uh, gross sales and income come from out of state. Badlander Spirits actually projects that they're likely to have seventy-five percent of their gross sales and income from out of state sales. Um, and the last criterion set forth is that they must be current on their taxes for the property, and that is the case in the present instance. So you really have three options before you this evening. Um, the first of which is to not grant a tax abatement to either uh, Prickly Pear Development LLC or Five Star Leasing LLC. Section, uh, second option would be to grant uh, twenty-five percent abatement, which really functionally sounds like a bit of a misnomer because you would be agreeing to abating seventy-five percent of the taxes for a period of five years. Um, and then with each subsequent year, up to year ten, you'd add on an additional ten, fifteen percent, sorry, of taxes that would be due. The third option is fifty percent tax abatement, which is what is presented in the uh, resolutions before you this evening. Um, and in that instance, for the first five years, taxes would be abated at fifty percent. And then for each subsequent year, up until year ten, you'd add on a further ten percent. Um, so I do want to note, as far as the term for this tax abatement, because uh, Department of Revenue looked at this project and saw that the construction is still very much underway, the um, equipment is not yet in the facility. Um, the tax abatement would start in twenty twenty-four. It would run then through twenty thirty-three. So I just wanted to clear that point because in the draft resolutions that were provided to you initially and what were posted online, the Five Star Leasing LLC draft resolution actually had the wrong date. So I just wanted to clarify that point. It would be twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-three, and the city attorney's office has already made that correction. Um, another thing that I want to point out with whatever you choose to do with the tax abatements, the county board of commissioners will be having their own public hearing on each of these applications on Thursday, and they will follow suit from whatever you choose. If you opt for no tax abatement in one or both instances, that's fine. They can select whatever they so wish. Um, but if you say choose fifty percent for one or both of these, they will have to follow that because what I understand um, is that administratively, it would be nigh on impossible to actually audit that or handle that with two, the two different jurisdictions not being in lockstep. So, um, down to the brass tacks, what you'd be looking at if you were to opt for the twenty-five percent tax abatement for Prickly Pear Development LLC, it would be approximately one hundred two thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents over that full ten-year period. Um, if you opted for fifty percent, that number would reduce down to sixty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-two and ninety cents. So that's roughly a difference of thirty-four thousand dollars. For Five Star Leasing LLC, for the two point seven million dollars worth of equipment, those figures are very different of, at the seventy-five percent level, or sorry, twenty-five percent abatement level, I should say. Um, twenty thousand dollars, three hundred sixty, or sorry, twenty thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents approximately would be abated. At the fifty percent level, that would go down to thirteen thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. So that's just shy of about seven thousand dollars in difference there. Um, so the options before you tonight, uh, the recommendations from staff, rather, are to, with respect to Prickly Pear Development, move to approve a resolution granting tax credit, tax benefits to Prickly Pear Development LLC by valuing their land at fifty percent of the taxable value as allowed by statute for construction of a building at seven sixty Florence Street in the city of Helena, Montana. And for Five Star Leasing LLC, the recommended motion before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution granting tax benefits for the statutorily allowed timeframe to Five Star Leasing LLC for fifty percent of the taxable value of qualifying improvements, new equipment purchases, to property located at seven sixty Florence Street in the city of Helena, Montana. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Um, as I know our director Danielson and um, city attorney, Dr. Doctor, if that is her title. Um, and representatives for the uh, LLCs are present this evening as well for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of questions. Um, during our joint city-county meeting, um, Commissioner um, McCormick had brought up the question of um, the circumstances under which um, the taxes might be recaptured if ownership were to change, it didn't work out, um, et cetera. I understand that code addresses that, and it doesn't need to be included in the resolution. But can you kind of review what that looks like and, and if we need to actually include language for recapture or not?
Mayor Commissioners, um, I do have the statutes in front of me. However, in this instance, I think I will defer to city attorney, Dr. To respond.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Dean. In this circumstance, if, in the event that uh, the business would either sell, donate, or cease to be used as uh, the business that was proposed in the resolution, they would be subject by statute to termination of the abatement and recapture. And the local governing body, which is obviously this commission and the city, uh, would recapture the taxes that were abated. Um, the statute itself is founded fifteen twenty-four fourteen oh two sub, subsection two F, and it provides for that. It does not require that there be any further action by this, by the local governing body. It is uh, subject to uh, granting that tax abatement uh, is subject to this termination and recapture provision. So the, the resolution does not need to include the language. Um, and the language in the statute itself talks about the recapture amount is equal to uh, the taxes avoided plus interest and penalties for non-payment of property taxes provided for in this abatement section uh, during any period in which the abatement was in effect. So in essence, uh, if you were to just distill it down, whatever they were abated during this time, they would have to repay if they ceased to be used at all for the purposes that you would grant this tax abatement for. Does that help answer the question?
It does, thank you. Um, one follow-up on that. And I don't know if we have this um, in procedure or policy anywhere, but um, what does it look like for us to be able to track that? Um, I'm so sorry to ask that question. But I think it's something that we tend to grapple with in multiple scenarios, it seems.
Um, thank you, uh, commission. I, it, it's a, it's a difficult thing for code enforcement. Um, if the property sells, that will likely come to our attention. Um, and especially since it's a large, large commercial property. Um, in regards to some of the other areas in the statute where it has to meet particular um, uh, criteria, that, that in itself is, is a difficult thing to track. Um, we would, we would have to be very proactive as staff people to try to track that ourselves. But other than that, it's not, it's not an easily item to, to do code enforcement on.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Not to put him on the spot, but I was wondering if we are going to be hearing from the developers this evening.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, after the commission, and we'll call the, so.
Just, just wanting to make sure.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, public comments.
Uh, first of all, Commissioners, city manager, city attorney, thank you guys so much for, for hearing our, uh, our application.
Who are you?
Uh, I apologize. My name is Nick Koontz. I am the president of Five Star Leasing, and, and we are financing the equipment for the RTD plant. And I am the managing member of Prickly Pear Development, who is building the building. Um, this is my associate Carson Worsler, and he is gonna be running the actual DBA of the RTD plant, which is Badlander Spirits.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh, yeah, so um, so we had a, a, a joint city and, and county meeting where, where we kind of went through and explained everything. Um, so I don't know how much more I should rehash, although I, I, I will, I would like to mention that you know, I've, I've recently spoken with, with some, some of the developers that have gotten the tax abatement in the past, including um, for Pioneer Aviation and Boeing, um, as well as a new outfit in, in Billings uh, for a, an enormous Coca-Cola bottling plant over there. Uh, and the Coca-Cola bottling plant, they shopped around from city to city, municipality to municipality, all over the northwest, basically looking for commissioners that were gonna be forward-thinking, that were gonna help them with the project. And Billings is where they settled because they not only abated the taxes, but they paid for the infrastructure to, um, two hundred and fifty thousand from the city, two fifty from the county to get infrastructure into the facilities. Um, and that, and, and that facility is gonna bring a ton, a ton, a ton of employment as well as taxable values down the road. to bring a ton, a ton, a ton of employment, as well as taxable values down the road. So again, forward-thinking commissioners, bringing jobs, bringing, bringing revenue. Um, and then I talked to, you know, the developers of Pioneer Aviation and Boeing, and, and they just said, "The reality is, these, these projects don't make any money. They're in the, you know, they lose money for at least the first three years. If you're lucky, probably the, the first five years, and so without the tax abatement, they, they would have never made it." So, um, it is a big deal. It is a big deal. We are, I am, so Carson represents the RTD plant, and, and, and they're the ones, sorry, let me back up. Prickly Pear Development and Five Star Leasing are the ones that are applying, um, but just because we're the, we're the actual ownership, but these guys are the ones that are responsible, because the, 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 the property taxes are just going to flow through the, through the leases. And so, um, it, it's a big deal to them. They're, they already know they're going to lose money for the first three years, um, and, and, and getting through that is, is tough enough. And I guess, Carson, maybe I'll, I'll let you take over.
Yeah, I mean, cash flow is, is the biggest issue, right? It's king. Um, surviving those first three to five years, and, and cash is really ultimately what it's about. So as much help as we can get, um, that's ultimately what we're looking for. Um, we've got, you know, fifteen jobs planned in the first year. Uh, most of those are going to be somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five dollar an hour range. Um, we're, we're talking a lot of certifications, um, you know, hopefully inevitably, we'll be able to work with some different college groups to, to maybe do some internships and trainings, a lot of what like breweries have done in the past. Um, so, you know, that's a big piece. The, um, the mention of fifty percent of gross sales and income out of state. So one big thing we're doing is that RTD brand. Uh, we're obviously going to sell that in Montana, but we're also going to sell that out of state in different states, where you can actually sell it in grocery stores and convenience stores. That's really where the market is. Um, but we're obviously going to push it as hard as we can here in the liquor stores. Um, but another big chunk of what we're doing with revenue is, is what's called co-packing. So companies who can beverages, sodas, energy drinks, canned waters, turning into a billion-dollar industry now. Um, we'll bring them on as clients. Most of those will be brands out of state, and we will house production for them. We're talking production for the Mountain West, potentially all of West Coast. There's not many co-packers west of the Mississippi. We're going to be a very unique, one-of-a-kind brand, um, so that they can call us up and say, "Hey, look, we need Spokane, Seattle, Portland." Um, hopefully, we'll bring that on and bring dollars into the state and push product out.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Are, thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would like at some point to ask a question of the developers.
Yeah.
If not appropriate, okay. So, uh, question for you guys in, in our packet. It says the new, and as Ms. Ray pointed out, it said, "The new and expanding industry tax abatement statutes state that the abatement can be made at either the twenty-five or fifty percent of the total property value, where the above noted criteria are met and taxes are paid in currents." So from your perspective as the, the developers, care to comment on the difference from your operation between the twenty-five and fifty?
Well, I, I mean, we're here to, everything helps, right? So we, you know, we, we would like the, you know, the largest amount. Um, we think, we think that, we think that, that it's, it's just and fair, and that it'll help us, and that we'll hire a bunch of people, and we'll create the, the city and the county a whole bunch of tax revenue down the road. Um, but we have to get there first, so we're asking for the, you know, the higher of the two.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Uh, Brian Ober.
You have the floor, Mr. Ober.
Yes, uh, hello, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Brian Ober. I'm the Executive Director of Montana Business Assistance Connection. Um, we're, we, we've been working with, with Nick for quite some time on this. Um, when we come in, uh, sometimes it looks like we're supportive of every tax abatement, but there are things that we look at. Um, what we like about this is, we, we look at the services rendered for, for this facility, the amount of money invested. Um, but more on a, a, a different or deeper level, we, we really are interested in trying to diversify the economy of the Helena region. Um, as much as we've talked about the Boeing plant, Pioneer plant, they bring in machinists, manufacturers, they work very closely with Helena College, but the idea of creating a, a culture where we can have young people start maybe at these big firms and then branch out into smaller manufacturing. Uh, I, I look at this project, I look at McDantum, I look at Montana Hydraulics, um, Adipost Boats. These are all entrepreneurs. Um, the idea that with the, the big firms and then these small independents, um, we start to create a culture that, um, diversifies and creates taxable value and jobs into our area. Um, so we're, we've been very supportive of Nick and the, the whole project. We're very supportive of a tax abatement for this, and as an organization, would be using this to help to en- encourage other businesses to, to invest into the region and to, for the right size, the right types of businesses to be coming into the Helena area. So as an organization, we're very supportive of this tax based abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. Do we have any others online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I might make a comment, and then I'm happy to make a motion. That's okay. Um, I'm going to support, um, the fifty percent abatement. Um, I will say, as I've said previously before, I do struggle with tax abatements, um, simply because they're really the, by the data, the least economic, the, the least effective economic development tool. However, the legislature gives us, um, very few tools locally, um, to really improve, um, and support economic development. Um, I will say, though, that this property is, um, obviously going to bring a lot more value than it is right now. Um, I think it's cited in a very appropriate spot, and, um, excited to have a new industry here in town. Um, so I will be supporting it. Um, and I, I will, I would love if the legislature will consider loosening up municipalities' ability to, um, to really thrive in the, the realm of economic development, because we simply do not have many tools at our disposal. And it'd be great if we could have more effective tools, um, to do so locally. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion, and then, um, I will move to approve a resolution granting tax benefits to Prickly Pear Development LLC by valuing their land at fifty percent of the taxable value as allowed by statute for construction of a building at 760 Florence Street in the city of Helena, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We'll move along to, um, consider a resolution granting tax benefits for the statutorily allowed timeframe of Five Star Leasing LLC for fifty percent of the taxable value of qualifying improvement, new equipment purchases, to property located at 760 Florence Street in the city of Helena. I don't know if we're going to rehash this, but, uh. We will just entertain public comments on this. If there are any comments from the public, we will entertain that right now.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment on this matter.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution granting tax benefits for the statutorily allowed timeframe to Five Star Leasing LLC for fifty percent of the taxable value of qualifying improvements, new equipment purchases, to the property located at 760 Florence Street in the city of Helena, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. All right. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Charlie Gross. I'm the Director of Athletics at Carroll College, and I personally want to thank you on behalf of Carroll College for the consideration that you are giving our proposal for ARPA funding for the Nelson Stadium Enhancement Project. Um, Nelson Stadium is already a great facility that has served Helena for twenty-one years. It's done so by being the home of Carroll College football and soccer games, our two high schools graduations, and the Carroll graduation. That's not enough for that great facility that has an infrastructure of outstanding support for large crowds, a heated concourse, restrooms, multiple concession point-of-sale stands, adequate parking, an incredible vista when you sit in the stands and look at Mount Helena. When we decided that that stadium needed some enhancements, and how, what we needed to do to it to increase our own usage, which was adding a synthetic surface and lights, it immediately became apparent that if we do that, we can open the gates of that wonderful facility to our community. And I'm going to go back in time and take a quote from a, a movie classic, Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come." And I guarantee that if we put lights in that stadium, and we put a synthetic surface on that field, and open those gates up like we do to the PE Center and our other facilities at Carroll, people from around the state will come to Helena for the enhanced programming. Enhanced programming that could include things like the Summer Shrine Football Game that rotates from community to community and doesn't come to Helena, because we have no space for it. The State Youth Lacrosse Tournament that, at one time, we did let it, them use Nelson Stadium for the eighth, seventh, and eighth grade championship game, and they said, "If we could be in that for all our levels for the championship game, we would be in Helena every summer." It's multiple teams, multiple days of events. The Summer Soccer Showcase would be in Helena. We read about in the newspaper the need for central locations for maybe neutral sites for football games when teams have to travel four-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred miles. We can't open up a facility in Helena, because we don't have a surface that can accommodate them for all-weather purposes and maintain its integrity, integrity, no matter what the weather serves us. We can, uh, we can enter potential conversations with the Montana High School Association about looking at things other states do, like hosting a central location for a soccer tournament, or a central location for all football championship games. I constantly get approached by producers asking, "Can they get into that venue because of the accommodations it has for concerts?" To all of those things right now, we say no, not because we're not welcoming, not because we don't want them, but because it's a natural surface of grass that we need to maintain its integrity. So we feel if we could add lights, and if we could add a synthetic surface, we would create an, uh, a facility that is not only an asset for Carroll College, but would be an asset for Helena, and it would provide an economic boom. It would provide programming that would enhance, uh, opportunities for entertainment and, and enhance lifestyle. So we respectfully ask that you're, you provide further consideration to our proposal, and we look forward to more dialogue of the prospect of a private, public initiative to enhance Nelson Stadium that will allow for increased programming for our community that will have a positive economic and lifestyle impact to our region. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Do we have any final comments from the commission? If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.